I'll call to order the January 31st, 2019 Business Meeting and Don Krep's Last Business Meeting. So everybody in the audience gets 30 minutes. Because he has to work till midnight. So, I'm kidding. Les, I'm kidding. And with that, Don, would you please take the role?
Well, yes. Good evening, Commissioners. And of course, if for some reason we don't fill up enough time, I have got my copy of War and Peace to read to you all the way to midnight. So we have Mr. Stephen Madcore here, our County Council this evening, and as always, our Clerk to the Board, Mary Rathke. I'll start the role with Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first thing we'll do is recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the next item, which is, Don?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We're going to get a presentation on the Milwaukee Bay Park Final Design, and I'm going to first introduce Scott Archer, who is the Director of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, and he's going to then introduce our presenter.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Board. I would like to introduce to you, for most of you, I don't think you've met Heather Cook with the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District. So since this is her first time giving a presentation to you, I just wanted to give a really quick intro to you so you knew who would be speaking to you for the next few minutes. Heather is Project Manager for the District and has been with us as a staff member since last fall. She worked as a consultant for some time before that on the Milwaukee Bay Park project, and we were able to procure her services as a staff member this past fall, which has been great. She's done a great job. So because of the significance of the Milwaukee Bay Park project, we have a dedicated project manager, and Heather's been working diligently on that. And just for the next few minutes, we're going to give you an update on where we're at with this project, and then, of course, we would be available for any questions you may have. So Heather.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. I'm very happy to be here to talk about the Milwaukee Bay Park project and provide you with an update. You hopefully have been present in the past for a couple of updates that NCPRD has provided. That went too quickly. NCPRD in October 2017 came to update you and talk about the kickoff of the effort to work with the city in partnership for the design and engineering for the final design for Milwaukee Bay Park. And then back in June of this past year, we came back on the consent agenda to approve a contract to bring on Tu-ink Studio to lead our design team, which they've been doing very well since. So they were brought on board to update and revise the 2010 plan that was done by the City of Milwaukee. So I'm just going to take a moment before I provide the update to just orient you. I know some of you are very familiar with Milwaukee Bay Park and some a little bit less. The park is located in the City of Milwaukee and is just adjacent to downtown, right across Oregon 99E. If you're familiar with Wes's Kellogg Plant, it's just north of that and really kind of bounded by the mouth of Johnson Creek and Kellogg Creek. It's, again, as many of you know, it's a very significant site. Not only is it a waterfront site, which is increasingly rare, but it's open land. It's been put together by the city over many years and many volunteers as a park site and has received many, many years of effort. The effort we're embarking on now is, this seems to be advancing two at a time instead of, oh, we'll go back to that. The effort that we're embarking on now actually looks at the heart of the site, which is the area that you see those two parking lots that are bounded by, or bound in Kellogg Creek, rather. And just north of that is the open area that looks very grassy in this picture, and that is really two and a half acres of the six-point acre site that's really the remaining part of the site that remains unfinished from previous work. And so what had happened with this site is after literally decades of effort, the city had developed phases one and two of the park, including on the north end, Klein Point, which is an overlook made possible with a donation by the Klein family, as well as a lot of really valuable work along the periphery, the restoration of the bank, the development of two parking lots, and a boat ramp and boat launch with dock area, a riverside pathway, and a temporary alignment of the trolley trail. So lots of improvements that really have provided the framework for the final phase, which is what we're heading into now. So in today's update, I just wanted to kind of follow up and lead from October 2017 when we said that we were going to have a schematic design process that would refine the project components, identify project costs, and engage the community. And that's exactly what we've been doing. So I'll do just a very quick overview of our summer and fall progress, a more up-to-date overview of our winter work, including the draft alternative that we have now and the review process that we're currently in, as well as our cost estimates. And then I'll talk a little bit about funding, schedule, and next steps. And as time allows, please know that we're here for any questions or comments as well. Sorry, I don't know why this is toggling more than one at a time, but I'll try to be less. Ah, okay. So in the summer and fall, we really tried to pick up from where the 2010 plan left off and go back and see what was in that plan and how to bring it forward to test and revise it for today's needs, and given that there were many things in the approval of the 2010 plan that were conditions of approval, things that needed to be altered or modified in the final plan that would go forward. So we really dug in in July and August with a lot of technical analysis, looking at design principles and programming, sort of the nitty-gritty of planning. And then we brought that to the public and had a really wonderful public event to kick off the final design and actually get a lot of input from the public on some of the preliminary design ideas. We turned that around and brought it to a phase in the fall, which was the development of three design alternatives. And with those alternatives, we wanted to bring those to the public and get people's thoughts on what worked, what didn't work, what resonated, what didn't, and take the cues from there, knowing all the while that we have a lot of technical constraints and opportunities on the site that bound us as well. So part of the excitement about this phase of work in the summer and fall is that we had a lot of public input. We had two major events, but we got over 1,100 survey responses from two surveys. We had over 300 people attend our two events. We also had probably about 80 or so people, like rolling up their sleeves and really gathering around the table to dig into the design, either at our public workshop or in smaller facilitated groups. So we've been really, really happy with the public's engagement on this process and how engaged everyone is. These graphics are a little bit jumbled, I apologize, but the Steering Advisory Committee and the Project Management Group and the Technical Advisory Group are the three bodies that I signify below in those boxes to show that the groups are supporting this project throughout. So our Steering Advisory Committee is made up of the Parks and Recreation Board in Milwaukee, as well as several district-wide representatives. They really help us go through every phase of the project and offer advice going forward. We also have our Technical Advisor Group that's really to check in with when we have technical questions, and a Project Management Group that's made up of the city and the NCPRD to guide the project sort of day-to-day. So where we are right now is we have this draft preferred alternative and cost estimate, and that's what came out of, that's what followed our development of three design alternatives and the feedback that followed. That's for internal presentation and review. Where we're trying to get from here is to get to a recommended final design that we would bring to the public and bring to the City Planning Office for planning review, as well as to support a funding plan in the pursuit of competitive funding. So that is why we're here, and that's why we are also meeting with a lot of other groups, including City Council in Milwaukee. We'll be meeting again with our Steering Advisory Committee and technical folks, all to really take the time to look at this draft alternative and see with the cost estimate information what the best path is to proceed. So the draft preferred alternative has a lot of detail that's shown on this slide, and I won't take the time tonight to go through all the different components. Each one is actually pretty exciting, but I want to point out some of the major features of the site. The amphitheater is a terraced space with seat walls and a stage platform to host community events, things like movies, concerts, et cetera. We have a children's nature play area, a water feature there in kind of a blue background, and a plaza that encompasses not only a flexible space for people off the trolley trail, but also a picnic overlook and a restroom and connections to the past throughout the site. So you really have these major program elements, including the trolley trail. And again, some of these slides didn't quite translate, so I apologize, but the trolley trail runs along that south sidewalk that you see. It's captured somewhat in the long shape that covers the plaza. That trolley trail is part of the six-mile trolley trail in the district, and it's really a key part of tying this site into the larger region to make this not just a significant site as far as a waterfront, and not just a significant site because it's right by downtown, but also a significant site in that it's directly tying in with a major district amenity that we already enjoy. I apologize because I have other handouts that have updated information. Let me take a minute to hand these out to you. I'll take them. So contrary to the blank you see on your screen, we don't get to make up what the project costs, but that is an older version of the presentation. So the paper in front of you has the updated version of this, and the cost estimate that we just received this week has the total at 8.2 million in construction costs. That does include contingencies and escalation. Those are at 16%, not the 25% on this slide. That was from an earlier, an earlier cost estimate that was more general. It does not include soft costs, but they are estimated at about 1.6 million based as a percentage of the total. The city estimates that went into the project were about 3 to 3.8 million, depending on when they were referred to. And so we've looked back at the original cost estimate and these newer ones to see that what appears to account for the difference is both the economy with just a lot of escalation in construction costs, as you probably are all familiar with from reviewing projects, and also differences in the estimating and the assumptions that go into the estimate. So overall, we're really excited to have a robust estimate. This gives us a way to move forward and make decisions. It gives us a tool, and it also helps us avoid surprises later when you don't go into this process with a robust cost estimate. So the funding picture for this project is something that we're still really pulling together. We want to see a project that can compete for funds, which we think this project can. We're starting to list out those sources that may be the most probable for this project, things like the NCPRD SDC funds for Zone One, city funds as well, that the city has already committed, looking at regional funds with some good possibilities on the horizon, potentially from a Metro bond if that continues, also competitive grants at the state level, regional level, and also exploring the possibility of a general obligation bond or other mechanisms, public or private. So all told, there's a lot that we can still explore. At this point, we know that the most probable sources sum up to about 3.4 million. So we're looking at a gap of about 6.4, I believe is the number. I'm going to pull up the new one, so keep talking. Oh, great. Thank you. Yeah, 6.4 and a half to 6.5. So that number gives us some good motivation to explore in this phase how we align the program uses and the funding sources. And so we'll have a slide up here in a second, but you have it on your sheet. This review phase that we're in now is really about looking at multiple scenarios and evaluating those to see how we can maximize the uses and maximize the funding to create a park that is a district amenity and a great park for the long term. So we'll be working on that, analyzing different alternatives, looking at the costs, looking at the funding scenarios for each, also how those costs and funding affect the timeline as well. From that, we'll be able to move forward with a recommendation for a final design that we can take to the public, and as I said before, also take to the City Planning Office for review and move forward to help support a funding plan. So some of our challenges at this point are really about balancing these goals. We really would like to create a quality park because we want to serve the needs of the public and also create a park that can be, have the longevity in the long term so that we're creating a product that we can maintain and is robust. We're also trying to balance that with what funding is practically available, so we're going to work really hard on that to let that support our project at the highest level possible. We'll also be asking about the feasibility of a bond as part of the process that may support the project, and finally, looking at the timing of the project. Do you want me to forward that, Mary, or? Okay. So I'll just scroll through those quickly. Oh, there was the trolley trail. If you didn't see it in the slides. So this was the process that I was just reviewing that we'll be going through this analysis in this review phase, and the challenges, including with timing. We're going to be continuing this design and review process this spring, and then continuing to look at the funding strategy. Construction docs will follow this phase, so we would go into design development and construction document phase. Ideally, that would get us to permits and approvals by the end of the year, and in an ideal universe, that would lead to bidding and construction immediately. We'll have to look at the funding strategies to see how quickly we can move forward. So if funding aligns and it aligns early, then the bidding and construction would be sooner. If the package takes a little bit longer to pull together the pieces for, then we would do that a little bit later. Still going two at a time. Okay, so next steps. Sorry for the problems with this slideshow, guys. I apologize. The next steps are to continue these district and city reviews, to really just get feedback and make sure people are aware of the work that we're doing and the good work that the communities put in, continue planning our strategy for full funding of the project. We're aiming for that spring meeting to take the recommended alternative to the public so they can see the results of their input to date and the hard work of the team that's been behind it, and then to launch into design development and construction documents. And with that, I would love to entertain any comments or questions if you have them.
Any questions or comments?
A couple of quick questions. What are soft costs?
Like what is, what are they made up of?
Yes.
Yes. So that would be pretty much the things that don't go out to bid, like the planning and the design.
Paper.
Yeah, I'm missing the couple others.
Paperwork.
Yeah, it's all the guidance of the, yeah, oh, permits and approvals, that's a big one. So bringing the project through those to enable it to be bid and to have oversight.
And my second question is, of the total amount, what do you anticipate being the cost for soft costs versus the hard costs? Because that's not broken out.
Yeah, the soft costs would, our rule right now is 20%. And in actuality, when it gets closer, we can fine-tune that number, but as a general rule, usually the placeholder in there would be 20%, and then you'd fine-tune as you get closer.
About 1,008, then, roughly.
Yeah, about 1.6 on the full program. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else? Oh, well, thank you. We'll move on to citizen comments, North Clackamas Citizen Comments. And so we have Gary Klein. And Klein Point has something to do with you, I think.
I think it does, too. Thank you, Commissioners, for the chance to speak on this project. I've been involved for some time, as Commissioner James Barr mentioned. The family donated the property on the north end to complete the city's project on the park, and I personally have been involved both through the Milwaukee's Riverfront Board and Riverfront Task Force, and now with the Park and Rec Board, and also on the Steering Advisory Committee and as a personal citizen. I just want to see the project get done that we've started here quite a while ago. We've gone through steps with opening the park for Phase One and Phase Two, and had a number of Commissioners here appreciate you coming by, and I look forward to doing Phase Three with you again in the near future. If there's anything you can do to help get this project off and running and so we can get Phase Three done, I greatly appreciate it for this regional district park that we're getting completed here in Milwaukee. Thank you for the time to talk. Any questions? I'm behind it.
Sounded like it. Well, thank you very much. I served as Chair of the Riverfront Board for a while. That's kind of how I got involved in politics. ODOT was very helpful when they did the McLaughlin Project. They helped us take out a tavern, an old hotel, and I remember when the Riverfront Park was where people dumped their trash. We cut cars, frames, hunks of cement out of that riverfront.
Yes.
That were very deep into the river, and so it's come a long way.
And we did, Oregon Solution was concurrent with the assistance from the ODOT and the Governor. And thank you, Mr. Bernard, for all the help you've done in the past, and look forward for your help in the future.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I have to thank the Marine Board because we got a grant from the Marine Board.
They helped considerably.
There was a push to turn the whole riverfront into a parking lot for boats, and that was a big challenge, you know, working with the boating community, make sure they had access and adequate parking, but it's come a long way.
The boat launch is very nice compared to what we had. The old boat launch, I'd driven over and pulled some people out that were in big trouble and saw things happen that I couldn't take care of.
Yeah.
But yes, it's immensely better.
Yeah, we had an employee at the city that lost their truck and their boat.
Yes.
When it went into the river.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Sure it wasn't funny to him, but...
No, it wasn't. All right, well, with that, we, any other comments on that? Well, with that, we'll move on. Anything else on the Parks District? No? We'll move on and adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks District and Parks and Recreation District and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting and move on to citizen communication. We have Les Poole and Jeff Goodman. Jeff, go ahead. You must be new at this.
He knows me, and he's frightened. Good evening. It's nice to be able to say good evening, Commissioners, because we're having an evening meeting, and it's good to see folks here, so thanks for making that happen. I'm Les Poole. I live in Gladstone, and I want to start by thanking Don Krep for his approach to his job, and this is a giant ship. It doesn't take much for it to start drifting towards an iceberg, and Don's always been approachable. He's always been someone that, when things are pretty hot and testy, he's pretty cool, and it's sometimes not easy, as we all know. So thank you, Don, and congratulations to Gary Schmidt. I'm sure we'll have someone that's coming from within the county that's going to take over, and I don't know Gary that well, but I think it was probably a very good choice, very likely. I wanted to mention this evening that I am, I've talked about it before, I'm one of the co-petitioners along with Julie Parrish and Mike Nierman on a measure to require a vote on tolling, and we're rolling things out right now. There's a lot going on out there. The legislature's dealing with transportation, talk of a carbon tax, and here we are, rolling out an initiative to require a vote on tolling because they intend to toll us on existing roads, charge us more during peak times, and a pretty vague idea of where the money will go. So we hope to make the 2020 ballot. Easy way to download and sign the petition or find out more would be to go to votontolls.com, pretty easy one, votontolls.com, and we've got a Facebook page, I mentioned in the past, that's Vehicle Transportation Alliance. And that Facebook page isn't all about tolling. It's an advocacy page for our roads. They've been neglected too long, and we can all see by the traffic and by the repetitive issues that keep coming up, that we've got a big haul ahead of us, so anything I can do to promote the Sunrise Corridor and promote taking better care of our precious road system and getting some lanes added to I-205 so everyone doesn't decide they're going to come through the tunnel to get back and forth from Salem. So we've got a lot out there. I want to close by saying that I've given you a copy from a decision your folks made in 2018, and it regards, I just want to bring to your attention something I'm sure you're aware of, and that is the solar arrays, solar farms as they're called. I was, I was a no on the solar farm that was approved here. I think it might have been the first one that was approved by the county, and it was because of the farmland issue. And as you probably know, that issue of using farmland for solar arrays has run into problems. There's been a Luba appeal on a Jackson County case. So I'm, more than anything, I want folks and the Commissioners to keep your eye on that issue, and I'm sure you're going to hear more from the state about how to proceed with it. You know, just something that we're all promoting solar, but we're also at a point where maybe we're getting a little too exuberant about it. So I wish you the best in dealing with the issue, and thank you very much for your time, as always.
Thank you. Jeff?
Good evening, Chair Bernard, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Goodman. I reside in Lake Oswego and have just finished eight years of service on the City Council. I'm here this evening to thank you. Thank you for something that you did almost two years ago. In May of 2017, five governments, Metro, Clackamas County, the three cities, Westland, Lake Oswego, and Twolleton unanimously approved, unanimously, a five-party agreement in a determined leap of faith to end 20-plus years of court fights and to provide the city's greater authority to move forward with respect to the Stafford Triangle. As you are aware, on Monday night, the City of Twolton affirmed the three-party agreement As you are aware, on Monday night, the city of Twalleton affirmed the three-party agreement, which was step two in this process. It's a continuation in an act of good faith to move forward to provide for the future of Stafford. It is not the be-all and the end-all. Each of the three cities and the residents and the landowners in Stafford got something they wanted. No one got everything they wanted. And there will be many more steps. Next steps will include, but will not be limited to, transportation and infrastructure planning as called for in the five-party agreement, governance, delineation of areas, community engagement, population projections, housing, commercial industrial lands, et cetera. All of these will and must be debated vigorously. Nothing in this three-party agreement precludes the three cities from thinking about, discussing, and modifying the agreements by accelerating or slowing what happens in the Stafford Basin. But it should, and indeed must, be done together. This agreement provides for the three cities to work together in a positive way to address the externalities of each city's actions, as well as the actions of the county and the state. That is what local control is and should be about. The three cities are united in not wanting to create another Twalleton-Shirwood Road on Stafford, Borland, Rosemont, Johnson, or Child's Road, or McVeigh Avenue. Each city already faces substantial infrastructure costs within each existing city limit. A particular interest will be the projections for population by the individual cities as compared to the total that Metro provides. It is indeed possible that there are other cities are already willing to take all of the population projection that will be coming here in the next 25 to 30 years. Nothing in this agreement has a moratorium on land development and construction. That can go forward. The three-party agreement benefits not only the three cities, it benefits the residents and the people of the Stafford hamlet. The three-party agreement was hard-fought and long-sought, and is again built on the work that you did many years ago, two years ago, to get the five-party agreement. And I wish to close, as I began, to thank you for taking that step in May of 2017.
Good job, good timing.
Amazing.
You've done that before. Good job. Practiced that, didn't we, Jeff? For the timing?
Yes.
Right?
Thank you.
And that's all we have for Citizen Communication. The next thing is Consent Agenda. I'd ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of the Section 108 Loan Pool Contract with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Approval of a contract amendment with American Medical Response Northwest for ambulance services. Approval of a professional services contract with Folk Time, Inc. for peer support services for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Behavior Health Unit. Approval of a professional services contract with NAMI Clackamas County for peer mental health education and support. Approval of a professional services contract with Stay Clean for peer support services. Approval of a contract with Roy Joy for the operation of the Mount Hood Express Bus Service in the Mount Hood area. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a board order vacating a portion of southeast Lori Avenue, County Road Number 2276 right-of-way. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the State of Oregon Department of Corrections for creation of an application program interface. Under Human Resources, approval of a contract with Orgomic Risk for the, to provide and implement the Risk Management Information System. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a grant agreement with Special District's Insurance Services for safety and security at the North Clackamas Aquatic Park. Under the Development Agency, approval of the License Agreement with Patrick Murphy and Dylan Murphy for temporary access to accommodate development of the CIAO site. And approval of the First Amendment to the Disposition Agreement with Clackamas Crossing. And Underwater Environment Services, approval of a contract with ADS to conduct flow metering with the sewer system for the county's monitoring stations. And that concludes the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
Do any Commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the Consent Agenda? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We moved in second, that we approve the Consent Agenda. And I just, I want to mention that Item Two is the approval of a contract amendment with American Medical Response Northwest. And I want to thank them for their outstanding service. And moving this contract forward, when Don got here, five years ago, this issue was a point of contention. Richard Swift got here about the same time, and I think that what's important is that we've built a great partnership with the fire districts, with AMR. And, you know, in the past five years, I haven't heard a single complaint about the services being received by our citizens with AMR. I have some concerns about some legislation that could break up our opportunities to manage these services. And in the old days, there were ambulance services all over the place. And this way, you know, we have a great relationship and a great partnership with our emergency service providers. And so I'm thrilled to ask, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Hearing none? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is a roast of Don. Now, you know, tonight's Don's last night. He's probably going to, he's loading up, unloading his office, loading it into his car, and you will be missed. It's been a pleasure and an honor to share our time together. You have taught us all a lot. And while we have not always agreed, we have worked well together. And I appreciate the honor of having served with you, and with all of you. But you'll be missed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Paul, let's see, your light's on.
Oh, I didn't turn on my light on.
Oh, okay. This must be Martha.
Yes.
It does say Paul. Because you weren't here.
Okay. Yeah. Let me move on. I just wanted to thank you, Don, for everything you've done for us. You've been a really steady hand for the last five years. It hasn't always been smooth sailing, but you're able to help us navigate through the squalls that we've been through. And I can really say, I think you're one of the best administrators I've ever had an opportunity to work with. You will be sorely missed. But I also see our new administrator to be, is in the audience, Gary Schmidt, and he will be a wonderful addition to this county. And I'm grateful we've had you, and I'm grateful that we have Mr. Schmidt on board to help keep this county on the sunny seas that we need to be sailing on. So thank you, Don, for everything.
Thank you, Martha.
You know, my 20 years in politics, I've had two people who helped me as administrators, and both of them came from Clackamas County as administrators. Mike Swanson, the first administrator, and now you. That's pretty amazing. And we've all learned a lot. And is there, is anybody else, want to add anything? We had a party last night.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's not, you see, we got a lot to talk about till midnight. But Ken?
Since we're doing this now, instead of a little further down the road here, I just want to say I really appreciated the wise counsel that you gave me on more than one occasion. And as I said the other day, particularly at 10 o'clock at night, with a glass of wine in your hand and a cocktail in mine, and both of us on the phone. The thing about politicians is that we are all very strong-willed people. It's why we do this business. And we want what we want, and sometimes we need to slow down a little bit and remember that it takes cooperation and communication and patience to get things done. And that wise counsel that you have given me has, I think, helped make me a more effective Commissioner. So I want to thank you personally for that. It's meant a lot, as well as your friendship. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Well, with that, we will move on to County Administrator Update. Oh, we want to do the photo now? Okay, let's do the photo. I did.
All right. Okay, closer together, closer together. Come on, move in. Okay, we're going over here first. There you go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay? Again?
Yes.
We do it.
Yeah. Okay, so, Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple things. I've been suffering with a little bit of a cold this week, so I'm trying to hang on to my voice. But I want to say that in order to do what Don does, and after being here for the five years and all the different challenges we have faced, you're, it takes incredible patience to do what you do. You know, I know that it takes incredible patience to do what, you know, what we do up here, and I can reflect on that. But I just wanted to say your, I said this yesterday, your calm, steady hand at the helm, and maintaining your composure, and your ability to be, process problems, your critical thinking, and a number of those attributes have really shown through, and your years of experience have benefited this county, and has accomplished a lot of good things in the county. So my sincere gratitude for your service here at Clackamas County.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. Yes.
And with that, you, County Administrator.
I actually do have a regular report to give to you this evening. And I actually have a rather unusual request. Last week, I shared with you some good words about the work county staff are doing from Mr. LaRue, from the Beaver Creek area. He'd received some good services from our code enforcement staff, and he must have listened in, because he asked again if, maybe I might take the time to actually name the individuals he worked with, to honor each of those individuals for how they helped him. So I'm going to do that at his request. And from our Department of Transportation and Development, this had to do with working on a home construction project. He wanted me to make sure that we acknowledged Cheryl Bell, Richard Carlson, Shirley Cass Crosby, Christine Cannon, Kathy Crutchfield, Duffy Gertz, Kristy Grinstead, Andrea Hall, Stephanie Jacobson, Jennifer Cowpey, Jody Lagerway, Dave Pope, Matt Van Loon, and Brad Wheeler. And then with the Department of Assessment and Taxation, John Bonnet, Jeff Bennett, Ryan Binkowski Burke, and Cassie Cooper. So I just wanted to thank those staff for the good work that they do, and I want to thank Mr. LaRue for sharing those good words about our county team. I also have impressive data regarding our repair fairs. These fairs are coordinated by our Sustainability and Solid Waste Division. What we do is we allow residents to bring in broken items to see whether or not they could be fixed, rather than thrown away. And last year, we had some seven repair fairs with some 540 total items that were inspected there, of which we were able to save and repair some 390. And that's really a 72% repair rate, which means that those items didn't end up in the landfill. They got put back to work. We've already held one repair fair this year, and we had some 76 items fixed at that fair. We've got five more scheduled through July, and I just wanted to thank the good work the folks in Sustainability and Solid Waste are doing for that. And then finally, wow, the long-awaited traffic signal at Highway 224 and Springwater Road near the Carver Bridge went live this past Tuesday.
Really?
January 29th. So travelers can look forward to shorter wait times and safer traffic conditions at that intersection. The Oregon Department of Transportation will maintain the traffic light, and I just want to say a great job to our DTD staff who are deeply involved with this project. So with that, I just kind of wanted to show you something. I just discovered this this evening. But, you know, the suit I'm wearing, I got shortly after I got here. And it was brought to my attention by my wife, Susan, who's here in the audience tonight, that I'm going threadbare. I had no idea. Oh, oh, yeah.
It's gone. We fixed it while you were out.
There it is.
Yeah.
So it just, that's just a clear evidence of how much elbow grease I've put into this car.
You sure it's not this?
Anyway, the only thing I can say, we had, that was a wonderful event yesterday. Thank you all for putting that together. And I just want to thank you for the joy and honor, and just the sheer delight to be able to work with the five of you, the great staff we have here at the county, and the citizens, the 420-odd thousand citizens that make up this wonderful, beautiful county. It's been, it's been a true honor and one of the best times of my life. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to keep it very short tonight. I'm sure that Don would like to pack up and go and not be delayed. So I just, what I want to do is I actually wanted to point out something that we've been doing in our jail that's been, looks like it's, has been quite successful. As you know, we're not allowed to keep jails overcrowded, so that oftentimes requires releasing people that maybe you would prefer we didn't release. But we do have to follow the court's orders. Under forced-release programs in the past, for instance, in 2016, 65% of the people that were forced-released failed to appear, and 66% of them actually got new arrests. Under what's called judicial release, which is a slightly different program, you still had 39% that failed to appear and 47% that had additional arrests. We have what's known as a pre-trial release program now, in which there's a screening that's done that essentially, in the simplest terms, puts people on a form of probation prior to their court appearance. As a result of that, we have gone from 28, or excuse me, from 65% failure to appears down to only 28%, and from 66% of new arrests to only 6% of new arrests. Shows that the program is working, and it's accomplishing both the goal of not having an overcrowded jail and having people appear in court like they are supposed to do, which means you don't have to issue additional warrants and go after them and spend all of the extra money that it costs. So I wanted to commend the staff at the jail and the staff that are working this program for their hard work and the success in their program. The only other thing I have tonight is the dog. And I remembered, Mary.
First time.
First time in a long time. This is Aria. She's a mature lady looking for a new place to rest her head. She's a nine-year-old American bulldog, but don't let the age fool you. She has a wonderful personality and really loves her people. She will need a home without cats, and any children in the house should be at least 13 years or older, and be gentle with her. If you're ready for a nice, gentle, retirement-aged gal to join your home, come meet her today. She will be so happy to see you. For more information about Aria or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Well, being that my throat's not doing too well, I must have passed this evening, and I'll take my 20 minutes from last week, add them to the 20 minutes this week, and then, and then share all those thoughts for a total of one hour next week, so.
at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Well, being, my throat's not doing too well. I must have passed this evening. And I'll take my 20 minutes from last week, add them to the 20 minutes this week, and then share all those thoughts for a total of one hour next week, so.
I'll be on vacation that day.
But I do, I think, what I would like to do, actually, and I see Gary had a camera earlier, what I would like to do before we adjourn, maybe, is, if Gary, if you could take a picture of all of us, Don, Mary, the five commissioners, and Madcor. This team has been together for a long time, and I think one picture in our seats would be really valuable, and perhaps even a picture up front. But we've been a team, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, I just want to just show that, you know, this is appreciation for everything we've done. And we've done a lot up here.
Can I, can I add what person? I know Laurel is in the audience, too, and she's our Assistant County Administrator. And she's been a fantastic part of the team and does good work. Would you folks mind if she came up here, too? Okay. Just get the whole, the whole crew.
So, and the baton will be passed to Laurel here for the next few weeks as well. So, Commissioner Fisher.
Okay. So, this is such a momentous evening that it's Don's last meeting. And I know when we had his farewell party yesterday, it just took everything in me, with my eyes watering and my nose all getting sniffling, and I just couldn't see a Kleenex close by. And I didn't want to come up here to the dais to get one, so I'll try not to get, oh, thank you, get emotional tonight. But we received an email from Administrator Krupp at 5:47 PM this evening. And it talks about the accomplishments that we've experienced under Administrator Krupp's leadership. And I just want to mention briefly, just, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, but an organizational culture around our core values, collaboration on the Stafford reserves, construction and operations of our Veterans Village, resolving the dispute with the Gladstone and Oak Grove Libraries, consolidated operations of our sewer and surface water districts, and also the funding of our health clinics. Also very important is our values of equity, diversity, inclusion, and our participation in the gay rights parade. And just the spirit of bringing us all together. So, I just can't help but mention that this is your legacy. All of these accomplishments over the last five years have moved us forward with the amazing staff we have at Clackamas County, and it's such an incredible legacy. But what I think I want to, I really want to thank you from all of us is that your legacy is also our legacy. And to continue the good work, we just can't help but celebrate that your nurturing of the staff that we have here at Clackamas County and the leadership of the people that work here and your excellent management is allowing us to continue under the steady leadership of Gary Schmidt, which is another part of your legacy. So, it's pretty powerful. We do what we do at the local level because we are the government closest to the people. We matter most to the people. It's so important that we promote trust in government. That's what you've done every day that you've been here, and it just means so much to all of us. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I've already thanked you, Don, and I will visit you in San Diego. You know, it's warm and sunny down there, actually. Even though we've had good weather here, it's a little warmer down there.
For some more of that ravioli.
Oh, you are? Okay, yeah, we had ravioli at a party. Well, that'll be my next cooking with the commissioner, with Bob from Bob's Red Mill. They want me, they want to have me, have him there and make homemade ravioli with his flour. So, that'll be, that'll be coming up. So, I'll make sure you get a copy of that one as well. Well, I have had a busy week. I visited with the Cambie Kiwanis Club in my own hometown of Cambie. And largely, really, what they wanted to hear about was the Veterans Village. And basically, I was able to give them the report that indeed, it's working beautifully. We've already transitioned a number of veterans to permanent housing. We've helped them, a few of them, secure employment. We've helped some folks get access to primary care. And then, we are going to hopefully be on the final phase of 15 pods in the next design and construction, I hope, in the next year or so. And I want to thank Commissioner Savis for all his work on that. But I've got a chance to talk about it. I also actually was at the Portland State University, Laurel, I wanted to let you know that, with Dr. Craig Shin, who asked Michael Jordan and I, Tracy Height from the Cambie City Council, and myself, to talk about what it's like to be a local public servant. And it was interesting to hear their perspectives. But these are all the young folks that are coming up. I hope that one day, we'll be filling the jobs that we have in this county, and maybe some of them ending up as elected officials as well. And it was a pretty fun, pretty fun chat and talk. And I'd like to do a little more at Portland State, actually, as I kind of move into my later years here. Ken and I had an opportunity to meet with Peter Lund from Super Genius, who reported on his Japan trip. He actually is doing a lot of interesting new work with robotics. And he went there on kind of a trade mission. And we are sharing information, because as most of you know, we actually do have an international component to what we do in economic development. And what we've recently asked staff to do, so we can let our citizens know, right, Ken, that it does offer, you know, opportunities for our businesses here, to get a list of the businesses that are doing business there and what they're actually bringing back to the economies of the county. Do you want to add anything to that, or not really? But that's kind of what our, I thought the gist was, but.
Just with one, just with one country, to give you an example of what it means in international trade, just one country alone, China, in Oregon, that is $6.8 billion of trade. We have a $2 billion surplus in Oregon in trade with China, and it's responsible for about 30,000 jobs right here in Oregon. So, international trade is important to us.
And I think we're one of the few counties that is really looking at this as part of our economic development portfolio. So, we just want to make sure citizens know this is real. It brings prosperity to the county, and I'm glad we're doing on it. I also, lastly, had an opportunity to meet with Governor Brown concerning the Willamette Falls locks. We are working with the state to find an entity that will actually take the locks so we can get them opened and functional as part of a tourism plan, as part of resiliency plan, should we have a large earthquake. And really having that be part of all the work we're doing down there, including the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. Okay, I'm going to go to Arts and Culture real quick. Oh, actually, am I supposed to do the word first, Mary? I'll do the word first. Okay, the word of the week is communication. The imparting or exchanging of information or news. Did you know, communication can be used in many forms, including words, writings, pictures, and nonverbal cues. Most everyone would agree that communication is vital to the success of any team, business organization, or government entity. All right, now we go to Arts and Culture. Sandy Library Coffee House prevents, presents Steve Hale Friday, February 1st, 6 to 8, at the Sandy Public Library. Enjoy free refreshments while selecting books and listening to music. Children's craft will be available. Steve Hale is a singer-songwriter with a soul edge. He delivers his brand of blue-eyed soul Americana pop in the tradition of Bruno Mars, Darrell Hall, Sam Cooke, and Bill Withers. The Spiral Gallery, first Friday, Friday, February 1st, 6 to 8 PM. The Spiral Gallery is in Estacada, and it's opening for the February show eight days a week. Artists are Brenda Scott, Connie Athman, Carol Pulvermaker, Kalichia Bush, Carl Hagan, M. Griswold, Nina Bradford, and Julie Cooper. For more information, visit clackamasartsalliance.org. And a reminder that Dial M for Murder at the Lakewood Theater is in its last two weeks. And Sonia, what's Kirk been up to? What has he got on the theater scene?
So, he is in preview tonight for Jesus Christ Superstar downtown at Portland Five Centers for the Arts, so.
Wow, so we can go to that, too? Get some tickets. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm up last, and I just want to remind the two people to the right that many of these successes took place after you guys got on board.
That's exactly right.
And thanks to Don and your partnership, and Paul's and Martha's, most of those took place, those successes took place in the last two years. So, thank you. And thank you. And with that, we'll help you, Ken, you vacuum, you dust. I'll pour the drinks.
I'll schlep some boxes.
With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.